And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Here.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Here.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Protem Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Quorum is present.
All right, from the top.
Item number one, call for special session.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number two, discharge item number twenty-one dash six, 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 four from Committee at a Hole.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by President Protem Scan.
Item number three, discharge item twenty-one dash six oh one from Committee at a Hole.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number four, discharge item twenty-one dash six hundred from Committee at a Hole.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Farrelittle.
Item number five, Controller response to recommended budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Farrelittle.
Item number seven, twenty-one dash six, six, four responses to defund the police form memo.
Motion to receive and file.
Uh, second by Councilmember, uh, Noakowski. On item number, uh, six, uh, the response from the, uh, Control Board. I'm very disappointed, uh, to have just received this response, updated response with a resolution from the Control Board at two thirty-seven today, when it, we have invited and the Control Board to come before the council. Um, they chose not to because they were meeting, they said on Wednesday. Uh, this budget has been out for weeks. I don't think that there is anything that stops the fiscal, fiscal, uh, Stability Authority, uh, from meeting in an emergency session when you're talking about a budget. And, and here is probably the most ironic part of this letter that they sent. As previously, and I, I quote, as previously conveyed, previously conveyed, we are available to address any comments or questions related to this report and resolution. Part of the resolution was resolved of certain things that they were asking the, the administration for, and unfortunately, this is this thick, and we just received it twenty minutes before the start of the meeting. Um, which again, questions for me at least of what is the purpose of this board? Um, and if it is about fiscal, uh, the fiscal authority, and we know we have a soft Control Board, uh, why are we not getting the responses in a timely manner? The Controller got theirs in, it was only a day late, and it was because of illness, um, not because of a desire to be late on sharing with this body, with the administration, and with the Controller, uh, this Control Board's concerns. Again, I don't think any Councilmember has had a chance to read the newest, uh, version, but it's very disappointing when our Control Board weighs in after the budget, almost, almost after the budget is done. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I second all that you said. I think that, um, since I've been Finance Chair, um, we have tried to have a better working relationship with the B F S A. Um, I know myself and Councilmember Bowman have tried numerous times to be on some of the meetings and weren't always successful. Um, here we've had these conversations over the last couple of weeks about our concerns about the budget, and we get a letter in the final moments before we make a decision. That's extremely disheartening. And I think part of it may be because of the comments that we made previously about our concerns or our attempts or wants to remove the Control Board. Um, we probably aren't in a good position to do so, but when we get in this type of customer service, this type of critical information and final minutes before we have to make a major decision, um, that's the reason why we want to move on. Not because, uh, they are giving us everything that we need, but because they're not giving us much of anything. Um, they've just recently gathered a quorum and been able to meet. Um, but again, for us to get this type of report in the final standings of us making a decision about the budget is just really insulting and more reason why we should be trying to do our best to move on from them, because they really aren't providing the services and the things that I thought they could do. I mean, I think they have the, um, best critical financial analysis that is, is available to us, um, but unfortunately, we don't get it in a timely fashion where it can really help us. Um, the Controller's Office did get us a report late, um, but I think the report was right on point. I would have loved to see what the Control Board felt about those comments, to see how they're reconciled, especially as it spoke to possibly the conclusion of it. Um, but everything else that was put forth, um, about the concerns and revenues and other areas was definitely, um, a concern. But again, it seems as though because we made our comments, that they've seemed to become more and more distant, more distant than they were before, and that's disappointing, but we'll continue to strive and move forward on our own to make sure that we do what we need to do, um, and make sure we do what we have to for the city's finances. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item. There's somebody else. Next item.
Item number eight, budget amendments for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Galumbek.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councilmember Wingo.
Want to make sure that we're on the record that, uh, the budget amendments that are here do not include the intended amendments for Councilmember number two, uh, three, uh, for the budget, which is to increase that individual's salary to sixty-nine thousand dollars as is stated, or whatever that step in the promotion process is for that Senior Legislative Assistant position.
So noted.
Council President, just so we can do it properly, um, the motion for the budget amendment should be approved as amended, and then I'll read out the amended version, so it'll all reflect the same out of what budget line.
Absolutely.
So do we need to rescind the previous motion and then make the motion to read them, uh, approve as amended?
Correct.
We, we don't need to rescind, right? Because you're going to read them all then.
Well, the motion, the motion was to approve the budget.
Excuse me, sir. Let me ask the clerk.
Yes, we gotta rescind it only because it was just moved as approved, and now it needs to say approved as amended, because what's going to be before, obviously, this is on the floor changed, so we need to put it as amended.
All right. Thank you very much for that.
Motion to rescind the previous motion.
Great. So legislative budget line ten, ten, two, zero, zero, one, four, one, two, zero, zero, two for hourly currently reflects two hundred and seventy thousand. Council adjustment will now reflect one hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Final would be three hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Budget line one, zero, one, zero, four, zero, zero, one, four, one, one, zero, zero, one for Councilmember three will remove Senior Legislative Assistant two as Senior Legislative Assistant four. And that's the amendment.
All right.
Thank you.
The motion is to, um, with as, as amended, um, did I give you a second on it? Well, we, we did it. So second by Councilmember Wyatt. Um, on the budget amendments, there are several, uh, things, but we will, did we read off nine? What number are we on?
No.
Okay.
We're going to nine.
You got it.
We need a roll call for the item.
That's correct. Thank you, Jim. Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle. Councilmember. Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protem Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
You. Item number nine, Mayor's Recommended Budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve as amended.
Prove as amended, second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Wingo.
I actually was trying to acknowledge before we made the motion. Yes.
Councilmember Wingo. I mean, Councilmember Wyatt, I'm sorry.
Council President, can I ask me speak before, or do I have to wait up to the motion?
Nope.
Um, I'd rather get the motion.
Okay, yes.
All right. Um, on this budget that was just approved unanimously, there are several, um, things that have uh, been changed. I want to thank the administration, uh, for working so closely, uh, with council, with the council, um, with council staff, with Clerk's Office, and with leadership. Uh, one of the biggest items, uh, that has been amended are what is known as neighborhood initiatives. Um, these can be used, uh, by, um, council members, uh, for those who, uh, have different priorities, uh, some who were desiring different things. We were able to wrap them uh, into one package, so whether it is speed humps or enhanced signage in school zone areas, whatever it is that those council members working, um, in their, in their capacity desires to achieve in their neighborhoods. It is significant, uh, in that, uh, the mayor's, the administration agreed, uh, to it. Also, it, uh, adds an attorney, uh, to the, uh, a line for an attorney to the council, um, which, uh, will be one of the first times we've had, had attorneys who worked within council staff or the positions, but this would be, uh, what, uh, is termed as a policy advisor, uh, but the attorney that, uh, a majority, and obviously, um, this has been approved unanimously. Um, it also, we have an agreement with the administration, what came up in our talks about mental health specialists, uh, being available during some of the most busy hours, which is usually when we look at the data from five o'clock to about one o'clock. Um, we did not get that in this budget because of the, uh, complexity to find out what it would cost. We also is a police union issue. Um, so they're not issue, but police union contract that would have to be, uh, worked through, uh, but we do have a written agreement from the administration, um, over this year, basically, uh, to look into that and to see if we can get more, uh, mental health specialists on the ground, uh, when they are needed, uh, the most. Um, want to thank, um, our Public Works for blocking off the square. Um, I was able to look out today and see people actually walking around in the circle, um, and they did that. That is not the permanent solution. I want to be very clear, uh, they, we're giving them time to come up with a permanent solution, uh, that would restrict unless authorized any vehicular, uh, traffic. Uh, finally, am I in part of what we discussed in the budget talks was a delay, uh, in the in-rim auction, which is the auction of people's homes, unfortunate land, uh, when they fall, fall behind in their payments to the city. Um, and we did, uh, request that. I was pleased, uh, to hear the announcement from the administration, uh, that the in-rim auction will actually be delayed, although it will be in the fiscal year, uh, so that the revenues can be booked on time, uh, that also, uh, has occurred. So, uh, thank you, um, councilmembers. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, um, if we had not have gotten, my issue for voting for this budget, and I'm going to be very clear, the only reason why I voted for this budget was because we were able to get the dollars we needed for the school zone cameras. That's it. There's too many questions with this, just like last year's budget. There's questions with the funding from the federal government that we haven't resolved. There's funding issues with the revenue streams that we're supposed to be getting. There's so many questions, just as many as last year, and we had to vote for it because we made a commitment to the public that the cameras will be down, and we would have other measures in place to make sure that our school zones were safe for our children. Um, it's unfortunate that it won't be a uniform process that each individual council member will have to do it, but that's their own choice. Um, I will make certain that what I agree to, I will make certain that we have it. However, I would have thought that because the mayor said he was for safe streets, he wanted to see the safe streets for around school zones. It would have been still as uniform for everyone to be able to have a process in place with striping, beacons, um, speed readers, but that didn't happen. So again, I'm, I'm voting for it because of that and the fact that we did get an attorney. I think an attorney for the council is extremely important. I spoke to a judge who felt that very strongly that for us to have a attorney by the city is not ethical. That's what he said to me. This is a judge, and I'm not going to say their name. So again, I think that this was the right move for us to make. Um, I'm looking forward to that person being on, and this is nothing against our current corporation council. Um, Karen Gordon has done a fantastic job for us. I'm not, I'm going to say that. I've said that to her personally, um, but again, um, the structure, I think, needs to be redone so that we have our own council that speaks to the issues of the common council, period, end of story. So I'm voting for this budget because of those two issues, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Um, you know, I, as we vote on this budget today, I, I think back to where we were a year ago when we were voting on the budget. You know, I can't help but think back to that time. Um, we were a couple of months into the pandemic, and our budget deliberations were taking place with a proposed sixty-five million dollar hole in the budget. Um, we were discussing the fact that we were going to have to borrow twenty-five million dollars to close out the previous year. Um, there were a lot of people nervous throughout the city of Buffalo, people concerned about being either furloughed or laid off, uh, people concerned about what services might be cut. Um, it was a very contentious time, and things weren't looking very good, quite frankly. Um, the mayor proposed that budget with, um, the sixty-five million dollar, um, gap in it, believing that the federal government would assist us. Um, there were no cuts in that budget. There were no cuts to positions or to services, and this council, through a, um, an approval of that budget, joined in on that endeavor, and it, I believe it's really going to start to pay off very shortly. Uh, here we are twelve months later. Um, we have not laid one person off. The city of Buffalo has not laid off one person as a result of this pandemic. Not a single service has been cut amidst one of, amidst the, the worst pandemic any of us has ever been a part of, and hopefully that we will ever have to be a part of it. I think you would be very hard pressed to find another municipality that has not laid a person off over the course of the past year, year and a half. Um, that sixty-five million dollar budget gap that we debated over last year, whether or not to approve the budget, um, based on conversations with the Department of Administration and Finance is trending, trending towards something closer to be only a ten million dollar hole due to unexpected sales tax and state revenue that has come in. We are very shortly going to be on the receiving end from, of more than three hundred million dollars from, in federal stimulus money, um, part of which can be used to replace lost revenue and the others to help stimulate this economy and stimulate things throughout the city of Buffalo. We have tens of millions of dollars sitting in an escrow account with the Senate because of the tribal compact, which I believe, and I've done so all along, believe, um, that is eventually going to come to the city. So moving forward, we have a tremendous opportunity here to work together as a council, as an administration, to move this city forward. We're going to be, we could be in a better fin, we not, could be, we are going to be in a better financial situation than I think any of us could have ever imagined last May. This past year has been very difficult. There has been serious debate. There has been dissension, um, and that's a good thing. Uh, debate on this council is never a bad thing. It's good that we're in here debating things on behalf of the people. There's nothing wrong with that. I think that's how we end up, um, on the positive side of things. Um, but I pray that moving forward, that the leadership of this city, the council, the administration can come together and move the city of Buffalo forward, because I think we have, like I said, a tremendous opportunity here to do some amazing things here in the city of Buffalo. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few things to say, but I first want to start off thanking the council leadership, and, um, I brought over for the couple of months, uh, what I wanted to see my district in, in needs that I need done, like new boilers and and helping fix community centers and traffic calming measures. And I also did throughout the whole debate of the school zone cameras, I did state that I strongly support non-punitive measures to be in place in opposed to the cameras. By negotiating almost one point, over one point three million dollars in neighborhood initiatives that will be divided amongst nine, I will go on record to say that I will be fulfilling that promise. So as those cameras go down in my district, I will be replacing them with speed readers and, uh, increased signage and markings to make sure that the areas around those schools are safe, uh, are, you know, outfitted to be safe, um, and to condition drivers to, uh, slow down before we go to punitive measures. And I also just wanted to state that, uh, last year I did, you know, early on in my, uh, first year as council member, did submit a, uh, resolution to this council, which passed, and also fixed our council rules for the needed of, uh, of a council attorney. And I've worked in council staff before I was a council member, and I, you, some of you folks were my boss, and I, and I did as a staff member realize that there was a deficiency within the common council. We needed to have somebody that had legal expertise that was licensed to practice in the state of New York, who could advise this council to give us advice that is independent and to keep us autonomous. And I'm very thankful that the administration didn't bite us on it, put it in the budget, and, uh, did remain consistent, and that is, that is in there. And I do know that, you know, amongst us council members, we still need to work out what that exactly looks like, but I'm confident that we can, uh, figure out that, you know, quite, quite quickly. We're also, we're not reinventing the wheel, you know, the your kind of legislature and other legislative bodies have this position, and I'm sure that we can lean on our partners in government to make this work for us. And I just wanted to, uh, you know, thank the council leadership again for making sure that the Fillmore District priorities and things that I need to get done in my district, especially during this crucial time, uh, get done, you know, and, and one of them is making sure that a large, uh, community center that has Fillmore District students that will be returning back to school in the fall have a place for an after-school program, and I needed money in this budget to secure, to make sure that it feasible, uh, is feasible this winter. And to me, that's a really big win, so I just want to thank, uh, the council leadership. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Councilmember Galumbek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I think this is my twenty, I know this is my twenty-second budget that I've actually voted on, and I think I voted yes on every budget but one. Um, I want to first off, start by thanking the, uh, administration and the leadership of this council. Um, you know, the twenty-one days of budget can be very, very contentious, and they can be very, very difficult. Um, you know, and it's been especially hard now with still doing this by Zoom, by text messages, uh, and so on and so forth, and, you know, the leadership did a reasonably good job. It's never going to be perfect, but we did a reasonably good job, I think, in trying to keep people uh, abreast of what was going on, you know, to the best of their ability. Um, I do want to say that, you know, as a person with the most experience on this council in regards to budgets, I have never voted on a budget that was truly balanced. Um, the numbers that come to us are based on if comes. Uh, you know, the tax levy that we expect a hundred and fifty million dollars, I think we anticipate that ninety-seven percent of people will pay, you know, last year and this year are going to be difficult because of the virus. Uh, and so we're still anticipating ninety-seven percent, but we don't know for sure if we're going to get that money. And every year we have to go on some, you know, some hope that the funding is going to, you know, actually be there. I remember years back when New York State was notorious for not passing their budget on April first. Uh, one year we had to pass our budget before, I think that was the year I voted no on the budget, but we had to pass a budget without knowing what kind of funding was coming from Albany. Um, and in that case, you know, we didn't know if there was going to be a dollar or sixty million dollars. Ultimately, they did come through with what we were hoping for, but I believe that was the year that I voted no, um, and that was more of a protest against Albany than it was against my colleagues or the, I believe it was the Masiallo administration at the time. Um, I want to thank my colleagues because, you know, people, I don't know if they understand this, but it's about compromise, and I think all of us have had to compromise to one degree or another. Um, I was one of the least interested in having a full-time lawyer on the council, um, and I made my position known. I ended up voting for it because I do think it's important to have an attorney on the council, uh, like we did back in the days when we had a chief of staff who also was an attorney. Um, but I'm hoping that it will be a process where we will grow and, you know, my concern is, is that there's not going to be enough work full-time for an attorney, but after conversations with the council president, and he said that, and, and others that said that they would be looking at policy and things like that, you know, I'm willing to take a, you know, a, a chance on it. Also, I want to thank, uh, the leadership, because I believe it was last year, there were several of us that recommended, instead of creating a new position, that we would, through attrition, fill the lawyer's position, so that way it's not a net increase, uh, in central staff for the council. Um, so I want to thank them on that. Uh, and the last thing that I want to say is, is that one of the things that is probably the most important in politics and in government, hard work sometimes pays off, sometimes it doesn't, but boy, oh, boy, luck sure does. Who would have thought that the Democrats would capture the presidency, the Congress, the Senate, and be able to put together a package of three hundred and some million dollars for the city of Buffalo, the stimulus package that's going on nationwide. Um, I think Mr. Scanlon alluded to that, that last year we were sort of hoping that this is what would happen, because, you know, having been here in the early two thousands, when we had the meltdown prior to the Control Board, I was one of those people that had to vote to lay off people, and I think we laid off approximately a hundred, maybe more than a hundred people. I think like a third of the, uh, inspections department was laid off that year, and we did not have to do that. And, you know, and it's a lot of luck that came our way, and that's something that we were very, very fortunate with. Um, so I just wanted to end by saying I want to thank, uh, once again, my colleagues. I want to thank everyone for the key being compromised, you know, on this council, and, you know, nobody really put a line in the sand and said, this is the issue, you know, that is do or die. It was everybody coming to the table, putting their position out there, and I think all of us are walking away, you know, not a hundred percent pleased with everything, um, but generally, you know, happy with the direction that the city is going in and this council. And last but certainly not least, I am going to bring up, um, I had people that came in that talked about the snow shovel, uh, the snow removal, the, uh, litter removal, and, um, the CATS program, the T and R program that the council president and I once had several years ago, um, that we're hoping to do citywide. Well, I can guarantee that in regards to litter, um, you're probably all going to be getting phone calls from Alyssa Hamilton, Kalissa Sosoko, Catherine Pesicow, and others, um, asking for us to, uh, you know, to put our money where our mouth is, to put this program together, and the same thing with the other two that are more citywide than just a North District program. So, um, once again, I just want to thank, uh, everybody that was involved with us.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to briefly say, uh, thank you to council leadership as well for helping us deliver for our districts and, uh, some very important and much-needed projects that, um, for the Lovejoy District that I'll be, you know, taking up, and there's, uh, there's so many things we need, uh, throughout the district, so we'll, we'll make definite use of those funds. And, uh, you know, many of my residents across the district are, are clamoring for street calming and different traffic measures, so we'll definitely make sure, uh, we have that implemented, and as someone who, you know, voted against the cameras, we'll definitely make sure that those school zones are, are safe um, in the Lovejoy District, so that's something we'll be looking at. And then I just wanted to, uh, you know, say these are difficult budgets to, to vote on. The first two budget that, budgets that I've seen as a council member have been in, you know, uh, times of, uh, really difficult numbers to look at, but Councilmember Scanlon's right, you know, with the stimulus money, we'll have an opportunity to really, uh, you know, potentially right the ship and, uh, get our finances in the right situation. So, um, you know, we'll be watching closely, and, uh, I'll be doing the work in the Finance Committee to, to make sure we're looking long-term and, uh, making strong decisions for the city of Buffalo's fu, future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wingo?
So clearly there's a little bit of confusion, uh, around this attorney position. Um, we're calling this person an attorney, and I believe the position was policy advisor. Um, so this policy advisor position, uh, is understood to have been, uh, given to us through attrition, but of course, that is not the case. Uh, this is an entirely new position that is roughly ninety-seven thousand dollars, and the old position that we did lose, uh, clearly apparently is still there in our budget. So we did add a position. I want to make sure that that's very clear. Uh, we all did compromise. Um, but I do have to say that, uh, with the new initiatives, uh, funding, we will certainly be able to, uh, do more for our districts with this budget, which is really, uh, the only reason why I voted for this budget outside of the fact that, um, you know, uh, again, like, uh, Councilmember Galumbek just recently said, uh, there are never going to be, uh, moments where we can guarantee certain, uh, incomes or revenues for the city of Buffalo, because everything is, if we do this- Because everything is, if we do this, if we do that, we're supposed to have revenue from several different streams and places. But we don't have that due to this council voting, you know, against certain programs. So with all that said, this policy advisor position that we voted on having is a new position. And from what I understand, this position will not be under the central staff where this is actually in the budget at. And then this new position also will not be a position that is a direct report to the chief of staff in the, of the common council. So like Councilmember Noakowski just stated, we do have a lot of work to do. We still have to talk about how we're going to hire this person, how the nine of us who are all equally elected to our various districts are going to have equal input and to how this person is hired, the job description, to ensure that this person's, this job description meets all of our criteria as equally elected council members in the city of Buffalo. And also to make sure that the scope of work is one where will be satisfactory to all nine council members on this council. So we do have some work to do as far as the hierarchical structure in your organization of that position. With all that said, I believe the only reason why I voted for this budget, the biggest thing is for me, ensuring that we have those funds available for these community initiatives.
Anyone else? Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Let me just thank the administration, Donna Estridge and Deputy Mayor Betsy Ball, along with Chris Scanlon and yourself, Council President, for holding the meeting to go over the budget and all the amendments and all the requests that the common council put in. The administration had their priorities and we had our priorities. And we did meet somewhere in the middle and we were able to allocate the neighborhood initiative resources to each of the council members. We went in there asking for street calming funds for infrastructure and we walked away with neighborhood initiatives. However, there are many council members that strongly believe that a part of that money should go through street calming infrastructure. I'm going to join Bowman and Councilmember Mitch Noakowski and yourself, Council President, in making sure that those streets are safe, including Councilmember Wyatt, and I hope other council members do as well. That is one of the things that we were very adamant about. Yes, there was concerns and there always are concerns during budget times. What are their priorities? Projections, actuals and things like that. Yeah, we have some concerns. We're, we're hopeful that everything goes the way the administration states that it will go or hopes that it will go. We do have our concerns going into the future. This stimulus money is only a one-time shot in the arm. We're going to have to work towards the out years. What are we going to do after this? Yes, we will have a smaller deficit that we will have to, to bridge. And, and we're going to have to have some alternatives. And Council President, you always say, where's the plan? You say about a thousand times, it's like, I wake up, what's the plan? And so I asked the same questions, what's the plan should things not happen? And I think that has to, that communication has to be transparent and we have to communicate what the plan is. So I'm hopeful that the administration is right and that the administration is correct and that we made the right decision. And once again, I just want to thank all of the council members for their patience. They wanted to know and finally we were able to get them the information. We saw it. We're sorry if we didn't communicate with you as much as we'd like to. But that was because we didn't know at the time. We're still trying to figure things out. So thank you very much, the leadership, you and Chris for, for supporting the council members. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did I miss anybody, Sam? Alrighty. Thank you all. Next item?
Item number, item number 10, Mayor's Four-Year Financial Plan.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by President Protemp Christopher Scanlon.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by Joel Farrelittle. Thank you. Thank you. We adjourned.